All right, we're gonna call the meeting to order. Reverend, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to read the preamble?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Good evening to those in attendance and watching at home. For the benefit of those that have not previously attended the zoning board hearing, the procedure is follows. Petitions will be heard in the order they appear on the agenda. However, the chair may change the order at their discretion. The board will treat all petitioners with respect, sorry, will treat all petitioners, the representatives of butters and other interested parties fairly and with respect. The petitioner will be asked to give an overview of their petition and read through their responses to the criteria applicable to their case, allowing the board to ask questions after each item. State law and local ordinances establish the criteria that must be met in order for the board to grant approval to a petition, and it's the petitioner's responsibility to demonstrate that they have met each criteria. Following the presentation, the chair will open the floor for the public comment, either in favor or opposed to the request. If necessary, an opportunity for rebuttal will be offered to the petitioner and the public. However, discussion will not be allowed to devolve into back and forth arguments. All comments should be directed toward the chair. Should a question asked be asked, the chair will pose the question to the petitioner. After the, after the, excuse us. Afterward, the chair will close the public hearing and the board will deliberate and vote on the petition. At this time, please silence all mobile devices. And if you will be speaking this evening, please stand and raise your right hand to be sworn in.
Okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so the first thing we're gonna do is we're gonna clean this slate, our agenda of the three petitions from SC Development that will not be addressed tonight, but we have to do it by motion.
And can you make sure you appoint both Wolf and Chuck as voting members tonight?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so SC Development LLC, variance under section 2.01.7 on the zoning ordinance, to construct a proposed early housing development 1.6 miles from the Daniel Webster Highway and Babusick Lake intersection, where such developments are not permitted beyond a one-mile radius of the same. Parcel is located at 29 Bedford Road in the R1 residential by soils and Aqua Fire Conservation District and Wellhead Protection Area. Tax map 6D lot 241. Number ZBA 204, I'm sorry, 2024-01. I make a motion this be continued to the April meeting, April 20, 24th meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Passes 400. Next is the SEC Development LLC, petitioner owner, variance under section 2.02.9, parentheses B, parentheses 6 of the zoning ordinance to admit a proposed early housing development on a parcel having less than 100 feet of continuous frontage on the public road, on a public road. The parcel is located at 29 Bedford Road in the R1 residential by soils and Aqua Fire Conservation District and Wellhead Protection Area. Tax map 6D lot 241. Number ZBA 2024-02. I make a motion this be continued to the April 24th meeting.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to put on record quick, since we're not having a discussion, that if the developer or the petitioner would pay attention to the minute.
I would like to put on record that if the petitioner would read the minutes, that it would be noted and respectful to the butters to give earlier notice if they want to stay this petition.
I agree, but to community developments and to what Chuck had said earlier, they can make that decision.
Of course they can.
At the zero hour.
And they can.
It's unfortunate that they, and I agree with you. I think it's unfortunate that they're inconveniencing a lot of people.
Right.
Unfortunately, they.
It is their right, but there's two sides about that, right?
Yep, no, but I agree.
Thank you.
All right, and the third variance, SC Development LLC, petitioner owner, variance under section 2.02.9, parentheses B, parentheses 1 of the zoning ordinance to permit a proposed early housing development to be serviced by private septic systems whereas a public sewer is required. Parcel is located at 29 Bedford Road in the R1 residential by soils and Aqua Fire Conservation Districts and Wellhead Protection Area. Tax map 6D lot 241. Number ZBA 2024-03. I make a motion this be continued to the April 24th zoning board meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes 400. Okay. So that disposes of those three. And you have as much time as you need tonight with us. Okay. So we have Caitlin and Stephopoulos.
Stephopoulos, yeah.
Stephopoulos, all right, I'm sorry. Variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit construction of a home addition slash garage 29 feet from the front property line whereas 30 feet is required. Parcel is located at 6 Mayflower Road in the R1 residential by soils and Aqua Fire Conservation Districts. Tax map 5C lot 11, ZBA 2024-05. The petitioner seeks a variance under section 3.05 of the zoning to admit construction of a home addition garage 29 feet from the front property line whereas 30 is required. If the board decides to deny the variance, please be sure to state specific findings as to which criteria were not met and why. All right, so floor is yours. Please proceed.
Can you make sure the green light's on? On the mic.
Perfect. Am I just reading the commentary that we submitted? Or would you like us to go about this?
Uh, yes, you can read that commentary.
Okay.
Usually read the first ones, take a stop, and then just make sure no one has any questions.
Okay, that sounds wonderful. So in order to permit the construction of a home addition and garage that is 29 feet from the frontage of Mayflower Road while 30 feet is required, the property line and existing dwelling want to be even to the current property. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the addition will not impact the health, safety, or general welfare of our community.
You proceed.
Okay. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the home addition will be both functional and appealing to the neighborhood. And granting the variance would do substantial justice because other homes in the neighborhood have had additions and garages that have required setbacks and additional variances of which have been granted. And then granting the variance would not diminish the value of surrounding properties because the addition would be aesthetically pleasing and will improve the overall look of the property, not only increasing the value of our home, but the homes in the neighborhood. Owing to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose, excuse me, of the ordinance provision and the specific application of the provision to the property. Our property is a split-level home with one front, two side, and one rear setback. The home faces Mayflower Road. Our proposed addition and garage would allow space for the town and utility still to access the area, and altering the proposed addition to fit within the setback requirements would impact the proposed living space. And building north would require additional variances, a smaller addition, and would limit access to our backyard area and the septic tank.
Okay.
The proposed use is reasonable because this will allow us to have additional home space to make this our forever home in Merrimack and continue to grow our family.
Any other comments on your end?
No, I don't think so.
All right. Any questions from the board? Chuck?
Mr. Chairman, it's not really a question so much as it is a reflection. I remember when this subdivision began in the community, and our community was a lot different then, particularly in terms of zoning and so forth. And as the town has matured, so has the residences and the land that people occupy in that general area, so that it has grown. And as people became more affluent, they put on additions, there are porches and pools and garages and so on and so forth. And after studying the request of the applicants for a variance, it's, I think, clear enough for me to understand that they have very little alternatives to enjoy the same kind of lifestyle that many other people do in Merrimack without having some reasonable adjustment to their setbacks and so forth. It's consistent with the transition that has happened all around them, and I think it's fair and reasonable. And for that reason, I support it.
Okay, very good. Okay. Any comments from the public? No, hearing none? Okay.
I guess I have a quick question.
Yes.
The only concern I would have is the 4.9 feet, right? Because that's obviously really, really close to your neighbor. And I think that neighbor's house is somewhat close to that property line as well.
That's our next.
That's the next, that's the next one.
That's the next one.
That's the next one, okay.
So we're gonna be voting on this one first.
Okay, all right, sorry about that.
Okay. Okay. There's no further comments. Close the public hearing. Any further discussions from the board? Okay, please make a motion then.
Prepare for that. I will make a motion that the board finds the petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient, proved each criterion is met, and the board adapts, adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's findings affect. And further, to grant the variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a home addition garage 29 feet from the front property line whereas 30 feet is required.
I second.
Does the planning board come into this?
Nope.
Nope, okay. All right, so we have a motion and second. So we will vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Raise your hand or say aye, aye. Okay, the votes, votes 400, it passes. So now if you want to proceed with your next variance request?
You've got to read it.
Oh, all right, read, let me read it, okay. Okay. Variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit construction of a home addition garage 4.9 feet at its closest point from the side property line whereas 15 feet is required. Parcel is located at 6 Mayflower Road in the R1 residential by soils and Aqua Fire Conservation District. Tax map 5C lot 11, ZBA 2024-06. So if you want to proceed?
Perfect. Much of the commentary is very similar as it's the same addition as the first request. But in order to permit the construction, home addition of a garage 8.4 and 4.9 feet from the side of the neighbor's property, 5C-10 line on Mayflower Road, while 15 feet is required, the property line and the existing dwelling run in a slanting direction, which is why the feet has a difference between the frontage and the back of the proposed addition. Granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest because the addition will not impact the health, safety, or general welfare of our community. The spirit of the ordinance is observed because the home addition will be both functional and appealing to the neighborhood. Granting the variance would do substantial justice because other homes in the neighborhoods have had additions and garages that require setbacks, of which additional variances have been granted. And one of those I'd like to make note of, which I did not note, but our property, the property next to us, 5C-12, is within a very close proximity to our property line. Granting the variance would not diminish the value of surrounding properties because the addition will be aesthetically pleasing and improve the overall look of our property and increasing the property value of our home and the homes in the neighborhood. Owing to the following special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, explain how no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provisions and the specific application of the provision to the property. The property, again, is a split-level home with one front, two side, and one rear setback. Our home faces Mayflower Road, and the proposed addition garage allows space for the town and utility to access the area. Altering the proposed addition to fit within the setback requirements will impact the proposed living space. Building to the north would require additional variances, a smaller addition, and would limit access to the backyard area and the septic tank area. The proposed use is a reasonable one for multiple reasons. This will allow the home to be our forever home in Merrimack and allow us to continue to grow our family. Additionally, we love our neighborhood and we want to stay there, and we enjoy that it's on a dead end, and it allows us to feel very comfortable raising our family. And another reasonable one is that we have a very great, close relationship with the property owners at 5C-10 and have had numerous conversations with them about the proposed addition.
I assume so, since they're not here.
We talked to them all before we even brought any of this up.
Yeah. So that's good. Okay, so. Any questions? Chuck?
If I may, Mr. Chairman. I realize that my colleagues also have questions about the sideline setback. And I would like to begin the discussion by once again speaking to when this subdivision was put in. It was actually owned by the family of the Pilgrim Furniture Company, which is why we have names like Mayflower and Pilgrim and so forth. One of the earliest developments, if you will. And you'll notice that virtually all of the surrounding homes, they were located right in the center of the lot and never really gave much thought to anybody ever adding something to the lot. So even the original disposition of the construction didn't really provide an alternative for anybody to have a wider porch or whatever. And in this particular case, we can see it's affected virtually all of the houses. So I'm kind of half expecting that there's almost like a red light shift as you go down the road. Everybody's been building on the right side that has provided equity along the constructed houses. Again, I mean, the reason that we have sideline setbacks as well as front and rear setbacks is important. I don't want anybody to think that simply because somebody desires a bigger project that it's easy to disregard our zoning setbacks. They are important. And I'm sure originally, they may have even had some thought here that they might need to get the fire truck around the back of the house. But those concerns have been somewhat mitigated by the way we fight fires now. And these houses are already constructed and have been constructed for a long period of time. And I think that any of these people can reasonably expect to be treated equitably in variances that only give them what is consistent with the transitional nature of the neighborhood there. So despite the fact that it's a little skinny on the back, 4.9, it's like 8, 8.4 or something on the front. I think that rather than even asking to have the addition reduced in size by a couple of feet, isn't really going to affect any greater benefit to that access. And so I'm perfectly willing to accept the footprint as petitioned by the applicant. And I think it's fair and reasonable.
Yeah, it's the side setback and the zoning code requires 15 feet where it's only 4.9. So it's not the rear that's the issue, it's the side. Okay. Any other comments? Yeah.
Mr. Niles could just pull his microphone a little closer to him.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
I was saying it's the side setback, not the rear setback. And where 15 feet is required, it's only 4.9 feet at the closest point. Okay. Any other comments? Discussion, go ahead.
Thank you. I agree with everything my fellow board member mentioned. But I just wanted to clarify, I'm assuming this is gonna be a two-car garage? That's why the front is that wide, yeah, okay, all right, thank you. Appreciate it. There's, yeah, with the septic and the pool and everything and the access on the front for two cars, there's really no other option that I see either, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Do we hear a motion?
I'd be happy to make a motion.
Okay.
Excuse me, I'd be happy to make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, you didn't, you opened the public.
Oh, excuse me.
Okay.
Thank you.
My faux pas, excuse me.
Like to open the meeting to any discussion from the public?
I'll introduce myself, it's Richard Jones, the building official town of Merrimack. It's, I'm not for or against this particular petition. Just some clarification, because I'll be the one reviewing this plan once it's been approved. So you will have septic now?
We do.
You do?
Yes.
Do you, are you adding any bedrooms? You, just, I'm asking the board, so. I would ask the board to ask if they have any bedrooms. Are they adding any bedrooms to the septic?
Are you adding any bedrooms to the septic?
Yes.
Are you adding any bedrooms here? Yeah.
Yes, one.
So the board, how many, how many are there now for the septic system now? What's it rated for?
How many people do you have in the house now? I, I, what are we trying to accomplish?
So the clarification is that if they need to have that replaced or redesigned, is this, is this addition going to impact if it was placed anywhere else? If you decided that if they said, no, you can't, and they have to move it somewhere else, then would they have access to the back of the septic to repair, replace?
So by what they have said, it sounds like it needs to be here in order to them to get access to the septic in the place. So it doesn't sound like, which is not uncommon. And we have a lot of non-conforming lots in Merrimack, as you're aware of. So it forces, unfortunately, it can force folks to have to put their whatever additions they want in certain places in order for them to be able to access the backyard for septic, which, so we don't really get into asking all of those questions because of the amount of non-conforming lots that we have that we've seen and that I've seen over the last 15 years. It just, it makes, it makes perfect sense when they, usually when they discuss, especially when they just start discussing where their septic is.
So their placement of where they want it now by going and getting these variances will allow them not to compromise the location of their septic?
Exactly.
Right.
They show on the, they indicate on the, on the map that they have a sufficient space to actually get around the house and into the back where the septic field is. And that will.
Even with the addition?
Even with the addition.
That's right, that will continue to be the case.
So then, as, as that, and I was listening and hearing the applicant saying that they're on an angle and the actual insertion into the setback is not a straight shot, it's a diagonal. So the percentage of the entrance into the non-conforming, is that greater if it was a squared or if it was, it's a triangulation that's being entered?
As.
This, this doesn't have to go on this long.
Yeah. Well, because the way that the house and the front yard is positioned, if the house was skirted a little bit more parallel with Mayflower, they might not be encroaching as much as it is now.
Correct.
Okay. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Close the public?
Okay. So close the public session? Any further questions or comments from the board?
I'd like to make a motion to grant the variance, make a motion that the board finds petitioner's responses to the statutory criteria are sufficient, proved each criterion is met, and the board adopts the petitioner's responses as the board's findings of fact. And further, to grant the variance under section 3.05 of the zoning ordinance to permit the construction of a home addition garage 4.9 feet at its closest point from the side property line whereas 15 feet are required.
Second. So we'll vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
400, passes.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Really appreciate the time.
Just keep in mind you have 30 days in which somebody could appeal. So if you start construction before then, and someone appeals, then, so just keep that in mind.
Understood, very much so. Thank you.
Have a good night.
Can you guys for your time?
You're welcome. Anything further?
Actually, I do. So with the SC management thing, can we deny them the right to move that forward? Like if we're just like, you know what, you guys are just, this is just, can we deny that? Because I want to say I've had this conversation with Robert before, and I don't know if, I don't remember if he, what the response was.
I mean, it's kind of hard when they're not here to continue it because then they would have to show up and they can't show up on like that notice.
Right.
So I don't really know how that would go. I can ask Robert and send you an email tomorrow.
So they'd have to be here.
I think so, like if they were.
And that makes sense, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I have a suspicion that because they were aware that they might not have a full board, that certainly gives them every right to have a continuance in the expectation of a full board.
Yep.
If we were a full board and they didn't want to show up, well then, I think maybe, you're right, we could take some action relative to a situation like that.
I've been through these before, and it's, I feel bad for, to Wolf's point, I feel bad for the people that show up here. You know, and I gotta be honest with you, it doesn't bode well for them because, well, when they do show up, they're gonna have a lot of resistance.
I often believe that one of the most unfortunate things is that we are expected to make an adjudication
Yeah.
of opposing interests, if you will. And I'd like to think we do the best that we can.
I agree.
However, I know how. Myself included, and, um, I think they very often either unfairly blame the board rather than maybe the applicant, but the thing that most disturbs me is that it undermines our desire as a community to have people participate in.
Excellent point.
Not only their interests, but in the interests of the community. Now, it's hard to get volunteers to volunteer when a lot of people are making noise about, uh, um, you know, an unjust claim of incompetence or indifference or so forth. I'd like to think that everybody that volunteers for the town of Merrimack, uh, does so with the very, uh, best intentions to represent their community.
For any board, and I agree with you, you hit it right on the, I, I, 100% agree with you, Chuck. I agree with that. All right, that's my only discussion of possible items.
Um, and then I just have one quick thing, um, I don't know if you guys have seen the emails, but Nashua Regional Planning Commission is holding a ZBA decision-making process training in Nashua on April 10th, I believe, at 6:30, um, that is free. Um, there is also an option to complete that online. It is highly recommended that you attend, um, if you need, we can forward you guys that email once again, just to let you know.
It's April 10th.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, I would.
Yep, okay.
If, if I could, I would once again like to compliment our acting chair this evening on what we all know was a very difficult, um, situation to contend with successfully, and I, I think you did so, so thank you.
Yes, you did.
I can understand frustration of the community at large. If I were, if I were in their shoes, I would have been a little frustrated or upset too, but this is exactly the procedure, what the procedure or regulations permit. They have their right to, uh, defer, roll it out a month. It's just unfortunate that this is the third deferment in a row, and, you know, it, it makes me wonder, what is it that they can't show up and complete the job? You know? Um, and maybe it's because they want to start with a potential, you know, five-vote board.
They had a five-vote board last month, last month.
Yeah, yeah, but I think then they, they weren't finished evaluating the cost of a sewer versus septic.
All right.
Yeah, so, but, whatever. Be that as it may. Okay, so, uh, the minutes?
I vote to approve the minutes as written.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes 400. Okay, I think that concludes our business for the evening. Motion adjourned?
Motion adjourned. Seconded.
All in favor of adjourn?
Aye.
Aye? Done.